Good evening, Marcus Phelps, Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. I'll call the meeting to order. At seven oh seven. And we do have three members present, Mr. Sutton and Mr. Spina, plus myself, so we have a forum. Uh, the meeting is being recorded. Is anybody recording it? We have three people in the audience and two, three or so online.
What's today's day, Mark?
Pardon? Oh, today is August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is the planning board and it's a hybrid meeting. So as soon as our planner gets back from the office.
Who does this National AWOL Day? There he is.
Who let you up on your chair?
It's all over life, you know?
Let's let you on your chair. Okay, our planner has returned, so we will start the meeting with a planner's report. Mr. Goddard.
Man, that was a thank you very much. Um, okay. Where to begin? Um, let's start with the decision to impose additional security over at Sunnyside Ranch Estates. Since the last meeting, we had uh, signed and filed a certificate of uh, of action with the town clerk. And a copy of that was requested by one of the attorneys representing the parties involved. Uh, an appeal was filed. I will defer to Mr. Doherty to interpret some information that I've shared afterwards related to some action uh, on that entire uh, well, case, if you will. Uh, the suit uh, with the town and the developers are currently engaged in. Let's see, um. I'll give you an update that one-on-one Green Grove Road has been uh, has been issued several citations over the past few weeks for continued um, apparent rental or leasing of uh, of both slips at the property. Uh, and at this point in time, it appears that in September, the town will be um, attending court um, for non-response uh, to citations. The building inspector and I have been asked to attend alongside uh, the police department to represent those matters.
So who has the lead on that? The building inspector?
Well, that's where the citations have come from, but this, I think it's technically a criminal complaint that's been advanced. Um, the local court system.
For both slip rental.
Related to, yes, the, the violation. Okay, let's see, uh, I added a special feelings back with gentlemen, on behalf of Kearside Energy, uh, they operate the solar facility under Northerly uh, parcel at Congamon Road. And they were examining options um, and development constraints related to the remainder of the property, uh, as there were discussions to purchase. To go that from the current owner. Which I believe is Miller.
Right, yeah, the Miller property.
Delegation of that.
So are there two installations, two separate companies that are?
Yes. Kearside Energy operates, we'll call it sixty-three A, I believe, is the Northerly portion. Uh, in Goose Pond Solar is a separate um, separate group. Uh, it might be sixty-three B.
There's potential for additional installation?
Uh, the discussion that I had was more about general developability uh, under zoning, not expansion of the existing solar facility. Let's see, um, I did meet with Beatrice Seiwak regarding the state law special permit. Um, that's, that's Hillside Road, uh, where she has property. Um, she and I discussed some of the COVID nineteen, both delays on her side, as well as the accommodations made to toll permits that were active um, during any portion of a COVID nineteen declared emergency. So just as a heads up of everyone.
Have we granted a? What's that? Have we granted that in the state law?
Yes, there was a state law special permit granted back in, I think, October two thousand nineteen. That was, that was a three-year permit, um, that was granted. Uh, so she is entitled to a full seven hundred and forty-two, I think it is days of the declared um, COVID-nicent emergency to extend the lifespan of that permit. So that won't expire until January two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Two thousand twenty, yeah.
And that should be enough time to do something, right?
I hope so. Wow. Um, I had a fairly in-depth exchange with Paul Delartre, uh, and some of his business partners related to the uh, marijuana cultivation and processing current, if you go over at Hudson Drive. Within uh, our bylaw, it specifically notes that those uh, decisions are transferable. Um, but no mechanism, hopefully the description is provided in that. And owing to the relationship of what we call an ownership um, and operation, there was some discussion about potentially changing or transferring that to a separate business entity that would be the operator and therefore the license holder. Um, under state law.
Time frame on that permit would go away, go a while, I mean, that we proved that, it seems like it's two years ago.
Sure, it's, it's, it's been a while, right? Uh, earlier in the year, uh, if not, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, Paul and I sat down with the building inspector to discuss his plans to progress. So at that time, um, in order to ensure that the permit remains alive, as well as to initiate appropriate action while the permit or as before, it got to the lapses, if there, both electrical permits is undertaken in several departments uh, to keep it active in the eyes of the building services.
Kind of put a stake in the ground there.
So, so to speak.
Using the permit.
I, I think there's a meaningful effort that's been undertaken. Uh, ultimately, so I engaged town council for that discussion. Uh, the, the advice was, let's essentially treat it as if it were to be a special permit amendment. Um, owing to the fact that um, the landowner, uh, their name is all over, if you will, the decision. Um, so that was the most direct path, at least to town council's eyes towards transferring that permit. Uh, at some point in time, maybe we want to expand um, our thoughts and discussion as to what that might actually mean. But there's a different mechanism to, that we'd like to entertain for transfer. Uh, but ultimately, uh, Mr. Delartre and, and his uh, business partners elected to just stick with a single entity for ownership and operation out there. Um, lastly, I'll note that I met with Joe Mitchell from Everforce for a very um, early and high elevation level discussion um, about a potential I use the word extension, it may be separate fundamentally from an average standpoint of the solar array on the north side of Feeding Hills Road. Uh, the discussion uh, involved such and lots of points about what a lot of micro griders. In this case, the, the planning board's familiar with the battery bank similar to what was proposed over at Hudson Drive. And that being able to provide um, backup power for a certain period of time to uh, facilities that the town um, associated with, in that particular case, they're right across the street from um, some school properties. So that can be part of beautiful discussions and um, and proposals as time goes by. Those are the very early, um, very early meetings that to explore that, um, that possibility.
Okay.
That wraps up the report. I think that's the one, you want the thirty-second version with three items, ten items, whatever it was? No. I could take one off, but that's everyone including our public.
Mr. Doherty, our chairman has arrived, so I will turn the meeting over to him. And we just finished town planner's report.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus. Uh, seven oh five, public comment. Anybody here tonight have anything to the board that is not on the agenda? Hey, anybody on Zoom? Okay. Seven-ten public hearing on the comprehensive impact statement handbook. For the major development review by law, continued public hearing. And then we thought the, would you like to pull it up on your Google? Why don't you pull it up if you could, John? All right, so, um. Yes, let's start. Tonight. By reading in the comments that we've got in the meantime. Since the last meeting. We have a comment from who says that's Steve Severia.
Steve Severia.
Severia. I'm bussing on the, actually a couple of comments, I guess, if you read through the email here. He says first, you may want to add to the list in two to address current safety practice. So if intersections with a history of crashes resulting in fatal or serious injuries that will receive additional site traffic demand.
So that's A two.
That would be yes, A two. Um, and then he where do we use that term? Oh, indeed. So A two D, the term failing intersections. He indicates that failure has no standing definition, although any professional should be able to interpret it correctly. You could refer to level of service E or worse, a volume in excess of capacity. Um, if we wanted to, then, then, or define failure in that.
Steve's a consultant at Boston O'Neill that I've had the chance to collaborate with in the past. Uh, I'm not sure of many towns, uh, but I do respect um, his uh, input and perspective on stack related now. It was the uh, the press line reached out to Latari um, in response to the request of the last year.
Okay. Um, all right, so that's his comments, and we'll come back to that stuff, but let me just go through these. This is from Charlie Donlap. My thoughts are under section C four. That's um L E P C should be listed. That is, this is the Local Emergency Planning Committee that is mandated for hazard material write-to-know under um, SARA Title Three of Transporting, Storing, and Hazard Materials. Uh, other thoughts, in the past for fuel depot stations, it was recommended to have emergency generator pumping capability. This has proven beneficial in past power outages. Now very few establishments have a safe place room for any tornado weather event. The town offices and library have, do have contingency planning, uh, recommendation for being proactive. And that's from Charlie Donlap, but.
So he has two comments, two separate.
Two separate comments.
Okay.
All right, uh, next is from uh, Ken Fomia. Does that say his last name?
Yes.
Should know that. Let's see, um. He just indicated, um. He doesn't know of anyone there who's able to speak to the fiscal impact statement um, that's included in there. But he's passed along an email to see if anybody can speak to it and is willing to look at the handbook uh, in the meantime. So I don't know if he's had any comments since that.
Nothing to do.
Okay. Uh, next is from Dave McWilliams. He indicates that he's read through it, saying he's impressed, cannot think of any item that he's missed. Uh, and thanks us for inclusion up there. And then finally, Randy Brown um, reviewed it and has following comments. Uh, one, section A, traffic impacts. Uh, what departments are to be consulted for this category now are listed. At a minimum, DPW should be included. DPW may have access to some information that is required that may be pertinent to the proposed development, such as previous traffic studies. Section A to D. He says, considering that a large component of the level of service noted in paragraph A two C is the volume of traffic passing through. Paragraph C and D are fit redundant. Also, who determines where there are failing intersections? Suggest eliminating car D. So we can talk about that, because that goes to both comments there, Randy and Steve. Um, okay, uh, insert comment section B, one B underwater supply. Um, I've caught up in the opening if applicable words. I would never put that in there, right? Who determines the applicability? Should be the town, but that is not clear. Maybe reworded state if requested by the Department of Public Works. Okay. Uh, section B to B and C sewage disposal. Similar to comment three above, suggests starting these sentences with, if requested by the Department of Public Works. Not every development will fit these conditions. Okay. Um, and then finally, section B for B, note that this paragraph applies to residential developments only. Transfer station does not accept waste from commercial or industrial businesses. Are. Okay. Do those. Does A two, yeah, I'm sorry, B one and B two say consultation with department.
What section is this, Dave?
There's two, yeah, so that says consultation is required, and then up one, no, uh, yeah, that's okay. So there's the required, and then we can figure out why I'm on this, in those segments, okay? All right. If I can, you can jump right in.
Sure, just add, uh, I did have two separate conversations, uh, about the comprehensive in that statement handbook. Uh, the first one was, uh, Selectman Jason Verone, if I pronounced that properly. Um, and he just appreciated the opportunity early, uh, as noted in here, to be, uh, consulted for main development. Um, and he expanded on his thoughts about uh, the potential um, interaction on the tail end of the process. From this left board. The other individual spoke with Alex White, the uh, Health Director, and he distributed this information, um, to the Board of Health. I hadn't heard any specific comments back, but he had uh, nothing further to add to the document.
All right. Any discussion from the board, questions, comments?
I had one under the section A one. We had been looking over, or we looked over last meeting all these items that are listed out, and we had talked about the item, let's see, third line up from the bottom of that paragraph, average and peak speeds. And there was kind of a question, at least I had, as to the utility of having that in there. So I did a little research and uh, based on some traffic study work impacts assessments that are done. The term that's used is mean travel speed. And that has more implications as to the site distance. What you, uh, whatever speed you're going at, you can see a certain distance ahead. So if you're approaching an intersection at thirty-five miles an hour, you're going to have more time to react if someone is pulling in or trying to get into the intersection versus if you're doing forty-five miles an hour. So anyway, they use the eighty-fifth percentile of this mean travel speed to determine if it's hazardous. If the condition is, is going to be hazardous. So that's how we can, we could, or should look at a road. And if the development is putting a driveway into that road based on the speed limit on the road, what site distance is needed? So anyway, instead of average and peak speeds, I think we should put in there mean travel speed. And the other item was related to uh, referring to the mass DOT uh, transportation assessment, impact assessment. Or, or what did I use, John? Or what should we use? Uh, yeah. Yeah. I think that's an important um, reference to have, because that would keep things up to date. So we don't have to revise these bylaws, or this, not bylaw, but handbook, because we're referring to that, just say the latest version or the latest whatever, or current version of that you know, material.
Okay. And where do you have a, a suggestion as to where to make that reference in here? We can still go through it. I mean, it's okay to say no, but um, I mean, you know, we can figure that out if we go through it.
It, it may be a separate number, parentheses number.
Okay.
All right. You know, at the very beginning. Or after that, number one, somewhere in there, I think of parenthesis.
Any other, anything else on other sections?
Other sections?
Yeah.
Yeah. Under environmental impact. Again, let's see, it relates to, and I don't know exactly where we are in the text, uh, lighting. Uh, did we have anything that addresses lighting too?
Yeah.
But generally, it qualifies to light, okay? So again, in technical literature, uh, foot candles of light above the natural ambient light conditions. So that's what we, we would want to have information on, so we can manage it. Because certain, some communities have set a standard that, um, the new lighting that's installed cannot be zero-point-three foot candles above the ambient light level. So references, you know, what's the existing light level? And you don't ever want to, from an environmental impact standpoint, negative environmental impact statement uh, go over a certain threshold. And so I think somewhere in there, we should include that kind of a measurement, foot candles or something. So we have uh, maybe a measure of the ambient light level natural ambient light conditions, and then they would tell us, the applicant would tell us what they're proposing to, if they are proposing to a go above that. The whole idea is, you know, promote dark skies and not let the light be too overwhelming.
I just wonder, right, I mean, if they have to identify the potential impacts of the project on wind, light, and noise levels onsite and offsite. How else are they going to do that besides using a standard measurement for light levels? Right, I mean, they're gonna, I think I'm sure, I mean, they're not going to scream right good, or, you know, minimal. I mean, they're gonna have to do something to provide some data source for it. If that's the standard measurement, I assume they're going to be using that. I'm not sure we need to get to that level of the weeds to specify it, but I'm.
Well, we did add at the end of that, including a life cycle analysis and materials utilized on the site. So we could expand that and, and, and add in something in this regard as to the natural ambient light conditions.
All right, so if we, if you wrote something that said like, including measurements of, um, natural.
Ambient light condition, natural ambient light conditions.
Light conditions. And the proposed impact there on me.
Yeah. And they may say, we have none, because we're, you know, using whatever technologies and da-da-da.
All right, um, any other comments?
No.
All right. Anybody else on the board, questions, comments? All right, um. Before we start working through these, um, anybody in the public uh, have any questions? Comments?
And cut by Point Road Road.
Thank you.
Uh, I do hope that you will consider the other financial impacts that I had submitted the last time you said you were going to think about them.
Yeah, let me take that out, so we go to that. That's the seller, right?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? So, um. I think it's probably let's start in Randy's comments, since those are the most targeted, I think. All right, um. Why I was starting section A here? And if you don't mind, I played this last year, the most, if we make things. Excellent, yeah. Um, all right, so traffic impacts does not have a um consultation is required section. Do we want to add a DPW to that? I think we see any issue with that. All right. So that's probably. C.
Would we add it as, as a three? Three parentheses, three.
Yeah.
Oh, no. But somebody can sympathize with that, geez.
Well, that way we'll know, we'll know where the changes are.
I'll erase the period, put the period in again. And then hit it. Just like, no, you don't put it in. Put it in the way you were speaking, like that, and we will play around with it. Consultation with the department, the public works is your turn.
Never fails, always fails.
We know how we're using our education funding this year for training for Microsoft Word.
Yeah, I dare you.
All right. Everybody okay with that? All right, so. Any other departments you think needs to be included into the traffic impact besides DPW?
Did we ever, do we? Utilize the safety officer anywhere? Police Department Safety Officer.
I'm not sure we have, but I think that would probably make sense to do for the traffic impact. Everybody agree with that? My consultation with the South Department of Works and. Yeah, do you want safety officer or just say it's off of police department? I don't, I don't know. What matters?
Probably that's more generic, it would last longer.
All right, any other? Consultations for that? All right. So Randy has a comment. About the C and D being redundant. That we don't. To see. All intersections that will experience a reduction in the level of services with all this project and the. Failing intersections that will experience. An increase in transit.
I could see deleting D.
I agree.
Because failing is like.
There'd be all intersection umbrella.
Yeah. And I think that's one of the kind of feeling really well.
And what we're interested in really is the level of service and. Some point, an intersection may get to be so bad that the level of service is unacceptable. Once. DPW takes a little.
And I think what I've got to do is spend a little more time is.
Now the hand up in the aisle.
Mister Moblin.
Good thing with the chairman. First is. I'm to designate from the board as the life event to review this and report back to the board of selectmen and was attending your collective.
Did you miss a meeting and you got designated or?
No, I was at the meeting and I was taking notes on something else. Just regarding. I just have two points. One is regarding this. Traffic impact, I agree with Marcus, mean is way better than average. Like if you take all of our salaries in the room and add Bill Gates, the average is good, right? But the mean is the better number.
Right.
And then throughout the document. I think we should be more specific. As to, it looks to me like they referenced in some places department heads. As I think it should be versus commissions with the exception being Charlie Dunlap's suggestion. I don't know if that LEPC is a statutory. Consultative board. But generally those boards set policy and the department head. Administers that policy. So where you reference the, you know, the DPW should be the DPW director. The conservation should be the conservation coordinator, board of health agent should be the board, you know, where it says board of health should be the health agent. They can always say, oh, I need to consult with our board and have the board. Call a meeting if they need to, but they are the people day to day who are supposed to be administering those. The policies set forth by those boards. Unless there's a statutory application in front of them, right, like a special permit in front of the planning board, right? But in, in the case of the comprehensive impact study to even decide if one is necessary in certain cases that's been delegated to staff.
Okay.
And then on. On the, the traffic, the first one. I would make the C and D are tough. Wouldn't any intersection in town with one car coming through it related to this project? Experience a reduction level of service? And I, I agree with the point made earlier about failing intersection. I think there's probably some industry's term or something that would. Exceeding design capacity or something like that, that's probably. Accepted term rather than what is failing.
Right, and I, I mean, I think of those as two separate things, right? I mean, in my mind at least, I wanna. You don't necessarily need to tie it, but if you're, if you're gonna be putting a project next to an intersection that's already. Let's tell me is exceeding, exceeding.
Exceeding design capacity or the, or the project would force it over that number.
Correct.
Right, absolutely.
That I would wanna know.
Right.
Independent of. Sort of an increase in traffic. Even if it doesn't. I don't, and again, maybe this is just working with terms of art and figuring it out, but reduction in level of service to me means more than adding in a car, right? I mean, it means.
It means adding in over two hundred cars that no longer let the intersection.
Correct, you have to sort of either define it or understand it to be a term of art that has a definition in some way. Cause that's fair. But. Yeah. And I don't, like failing intersections that will experience an increase in traffic as a result. Well, I suppose that you do have to have that condition because it's not, it's not gonna have an impact, who cares?
Or how all intersections that were experienced, a reduction in level of service, especially those that will. Potentially drop in grade or level of service. Something like that, or already. Intersections that already have a lower grade of service quality or something like that, special attention given.
What was your phrase again? My brain is fried, so.
You remember what I said ten seconds ago?
About the failing intersections, what was the term you used? Design capacity. Okay, seeds. All right, so we'll look into getting the correct terms.
And there may be, you know, in that mass DOT document, there could very well be some really, you know, interesting. Terms that. Traffic engineers provide and understand.
I gotta find time to read those forty-four pages.
Yeah.
Right? It also gets interesting though, and I was thinking of a software joke while you were doing this, you know, you have this document which you can modify at will. As referenced in the bylaw. And then you're gonna, this document mentions sewer use regulation. It also mentions now we're putting in mascot documentation. It's almost like if you're compiling a piece of software that includes a lot of other stuff and you don't, there may be a downstream change that may be. Very effectual to this, which may be then effectual to an application in front of your board. So you have to be careful with what you're including because you don't control, that's part of the sewer use regulation, so it would be very valid. And also mascot may make some change that may have an adverse impact on.
Right.
On your own bylaw inadvertent.
Right. Okay. All right. You're not gonna tell us the software joke?
Well, that is the software joke. Someone else makes a change and screws you up three years later because you didn't know they made a change, but you know, you're pulling in that code.
Yeah, okay. That makes, yeah.
That kind of thing.
So are we gonna make the change in three then consultation with the director? Of the Department of Public Works?
Yeah, we can start going through it as we go through. I think that makes sense to put, at least for DPW, let's go, we'll take it on a case by case basis here.
You're, you're just dealing with a DPW right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think Suffolk Police Department is probably fine to have.
Yeah.
By itself.
It should be specific, right? They can delegate, you can name the safety officer, you can name the chief and let them delegate under their, under their chain of command. Same thing with DPW director, you could assign it to the assistant DPW director or the DPW engineer, or if you choose to name them. But I was more thinking of positions where. There's a board that. Has a, an employee department head in town hall that is the administrator of the policy of those boards.
No, and it doesn't, I mean, I guess does safety officer probably, if we're gonna start putting in directors, should probably designate the safety officers, and that's who we have to send it to anyways for a lot of those applications. All right.
As a long as check and I just stepped one quick moment. Chief Anderson also reached out to me, it was jotted by the discussion about assigning this to particular individuals versus boards announcing timelines. Chief Anderson suggested that a timeframe. Please be contemplated for these assigned interactions and consultations. I think the idea is we, I think the suggestion came from the idea that it's. If there's outreach to. In this case, it's gonna be individuals. But before looking at that to a board or a group or what have you, that may not meet for a certain period of time, but there's some sort of expectation on the developers on the boat when they can perceive this interaction. Just a comment.
Yeah, no, I mean, it just seems like it, it actually would hurt. The departments more than it, it would, it would seem like it would be the applicant who wants timelines rather than the department. Now, let's think about, let's think about that. All right, actually, before we jump, I'm gonna just grab Steve. Cause he, he indicated, he did talk about that failure thing, but he also talked about adding. The A two. On. Intersections with a history of crashes resulting in fatal or serious injuries that will receive additional site traffic. Anybody have any thoughts about that?
Kind of replacing D.
I, yeah, I would.
Highlighting troublesome intersection, whether it's. Due to traffic or safety issues, I guess.
I mean, I think I'd almost combine them, and we find the term of art in the intersection, but you know, whether they're intersections that are exceeding. Demand capacity or have history of.
And wouldn't an intersection be designated as failing if it was a known. Hazardous.
I don't know.
You know, like ninety-eight percent of the intersections in Massachusetts are already failing.
Well, you put in a rotary.
Maybe ninety-six.
Yeah, I don't like that the failing intersections and I would maybe use Stevens. Terminology, maybe. If we're gonna use a D or have a D.
Level of service E or worse, or volume in excess of capacity. I don't know what level I'm saying that we mean, but wanted to put it out.
That's the mass DOT.
Yeah, yeah. There's levels. Okay, so that was his entire. Comment.
The change.
Additional stuff.
Intercept, well, you wanted to add the thing about the intersections with a history of crashes resulting in fatal serious injuries, but also. The failing intersections could be defined as. Level of service E or worse, or volume in excess of capacity.
Well, yeah, that would, that would improve it definitely. So let's use his wording on that. And then he's saying add an E. Which was dangerous stuff. But I think we're gonna know that by the C and D.
Well, I mean, I just don't know, like. Yeah, I don't know, it depends. I mean, I just think of that intersection by. Travis, right, I mean, that's. That is failing, that's, that's, you know, let's see if that, right now. That is failing. I mean. But, and so you would wanna know that going into something that you have a failing intersection right there, sort of regardless of what you had to, you have a failing intersection. I said, John, what did you? Were you typing in there or not?
No, I was waiting for the final determination. I'd love to make it up as we go, but I wouldn't be able to.
I'd use his terminology with failing is. What did he say?
Do you know where it is just right here?
No.
I understand, but he's referring to. This, right?
Oh, he's referring to.
That's where that level of service grading comes from.
Well, we use level of service in C, so.
Well, why don't you put that in there, John, for now, and we'll come back to it. We'll get the specifics. What we need in there. I mean, the thing about this, you don't need to. It's not like we need to get it done.
Level of service E or worse? You can take out that will experience an increase in.
Oh, I'm trying. Formatting.
You're looking good.
His first comments, did we want to incorporate any of those? The intersection, the history of crashes.
I, I mean, to me, I think that that's, well. There's a little bit of vagueness to that. But I presume that would be easy enough to generate for the police department, right?
Yep.
I don't know.
I need a comma that, section of E comma. Where volume is in excess, comma, or intersections with no. High rates of accident or fatal crashes or whatever. Put there.
Yeah, so.
Could date like Sunnyside and Ray's Farm, that's not necessarily an intersection that may have a. A level of service grade from. DOT, but we certainly have locals know that that's a. Or an accident prone.
Which has a history of crashes resulting in fatal series. Do you, do you delimit to fatal or serious injuries? We just wanna know that's the history of. Lots of crashes or higher. I just think you wanna, you know, if you have, if you're putting in a major development next to a sort of a red flag intersection, you kinda wanna know that. Sort of independent.
Yeah.
Independent of.
Expanding even beyond just. Cause theoretically, I think this limits it to. Fatal crashes or serious injury. If you have a thing, you have an intersection which is, it's hundreds of five mile power fender benders. Nobody gets hurt, but still it's a problem.
History of crashes, history of, yeah, but then you gotta define.
Many crashes and those things, no one.
That's a little rolling while the text, nothing to do with the intersection.
Well, I'd say let's come, the only thing about that, I mean, I agree with you. Except that then you gotta define. What the, what, what number, right? I mean, you gotta have some sort of criteria to trigger that. And so what's, what's the intersection that has? A significant amount of crashes, right? I mean, I, so. I, I don't, I like the idea. Was that?
Almost one death, but tell you fifty years ago.
That's the other thing, I, to me, this is a little bit of a, of a, of a place marker, just to come back to and then you'll. Tweak it, but I, I do like what you're saying. I mean, you know, if it's. If it's an intersection where you're not getting these high speed crashes and you're, and you're just getting. But you're getting a lot of them.
Yeah.
Because it's an issue. Yeah, all right.
That's like average and mean.
Yeah. For sure. We didn't fix that either. Gonna try to go through just individuals.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, no, no. Because we didn't change that.
Yeah, I'm coming back to it.
Mean travel speeds.
Oh, yeah, don't worry.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Oh, I won't worry.
I got you.
There's nothing mean about.
Uh I would change it to mean travel speed if anybody, alright, plural.
Mean travel speed. Thank you.
Alright, so let's go with Randy's here. Which is section B, water supply, I'm sorry, B one, the water. I have no problem with if requested by the Department of Public Works. Does anybody have a problem with that? And they're gonna be consulting with the DPW, so. Uh let the DPW determine whether.
Well, we're looking at public and private water supplies, right? We have to keep that in mind. Because some of these. Facilities or whatever could. Have their own well, not use public water supply. Is DPW gonna be involved in that process? Or the health will? So the first part, describe the proposed water supply system. I mean, you know, public or private, including average daily and people. So we're interested in knowing how much water. The facility is going to use and then also the source, right?
I think that's why it's said it's applicable.
No, I had to ask was in discussion few meetings ago, right?
Yeah, B then.
But it may not.
Maybe that's where we put it in what Randy was wanting.
Maybe this one, I think, I I kinda want the answer for this one, almost regardless of. I mean, I just, if it's a pub, if it's gonna be a public water supply, if you're gonna be using the public water supply. I I would want an answer, whether it's it's fine or whether the answer is it's not fine, you know, I mean, I would want an answer though, so. I'm not sure if there's a. Should be discretion on that side of DPW, they just have to provide the answer, I think. On this one, I I think the other ones, I was more, I was looking at, now it's fine, but this one, I think. Maybe we just change it to if. If um. Public water, if the public water supply will be used, right?
Yeah, if if public water.
Use evaluate the town public.
Because we wanna know, even if they're using their own wells, we wanna know if it's gonna impact. The aquifer or the.
Water service is a lot different from public water supply. My private well taps into an aquifer that services everybody on that street, like there's a. You know, and if that particular aquifer has been in a troublesome spot before, I would assume Randy Brown might know that. And would have an opinion on it if somebody decided to put something up there that was gonna tap into an aquifer that is. Known to be a drought site previously, right? Doesn't. Town water is still town water, whether it comes from the well or if it comes from a pipe.
Well, we need to clarify that then, because.
Proposed water supply system, they're gonna tell us right off the bat, well, what is it? Or looking for a private water well into the aquifer we're tapping into, or are we connecting to? Do you not think the town of Southwick has a responsibility to make sure that we don't drain all the water out of town?
But it also doesn't belong to the town of Southwick, it doesn't belong to anybody.
But that's why we're. How it's going to.
So what's, we're, we're, we're trying to get at for, for.
I I guess.
Comment from Randy Brown.
We're trying to get to evaluate the capacity. And we gotta decide whether we're using the right language here, but evaluate the capacity of the town's water supply and distribution system to adequately service.
So instead of applicable, we should say if the public water system. Is used. Evaluate.
I think that's right, that's what we meant by, yeah.
So we need to be more specific on applicable. If the public water system. Is to be used. Then they have to weigh in and say, no, we, we have a more time, you can't, you can't use more than whatever, X gallons or whatever.
Randy was confused about what that meant, so maybe if A says, describe the proposed water supply system, comma. Whether public or private, comma, including, and then B is public.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense, actually, but why don't we put? Uh so describe the, and A, describe the proposed water supply system, probably comma, including. Whether public or private.
No, just put comma, whether public or private, comma, including.
Including is the list of stuff that you're describing about the water system and one of those things would be whether it's public or private.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's.
I think.
That's fine too.
Um I mean, I think I understand what you're saying, but I think it just goes off the paragraph.
What, one interprets provide a list of characteristics of your system, whether it's public or private. The other is provide a list of characters, including whether it's public or private.
If you put it before the including, it just. Makes it all inclusive. But you have to do it, you have to, you have to.
Need to do it regardless.
In both cases. It doesn't. But what you're not identifying, what is, what are you trying to get at? I guess I'm trying to.
In what world, gentlemen, are we going to have that instance where they're gonna come with all this extra information and they're gonna be like. Or we're not sure unless you tell us, we can't. I mean, like, we're gonna have this information, I really don't think we need to hold their hands here.
So then what? It should be before including?
Yes, it should be before.
Okay, then put it before.
It should be before. We, the described, what is modified by what we're asking for, which is the average daily, blah, blah, blah. All this stuff that follows.
I agree with Marcus.
Alright, so.
That's good, I like it, John. You have the power of the keyboard, so.
And I think Jessica, I think your. What you were asking about was into. Environmental impact, right? I think it has to be covered. An environmental. We'll discuss the potential impacts on that one.
And that information is gonna come through the consultation with the DPW as well for water supply evaluation, so.
No, I agree, I'm just wondering whether that's probably the place for it rather than in this, which is more about. Impacts of town utilities and services than it is about. The, the.
Well, I think they're still gonna have to, if we're asking them to come in with a statement, they're gonna, cause the statement is either gonna be. We are looking to attach ourselves to the public water supply and here's the details of what we're gonna be looking for, or the detail is gonna be. We're looking to have a private water supply. It's included, it's there, it's the utility, the utility question is answered.
But you were, I'm talking about, I'm talking about B, when you were talking about B. You had said it shouldn't be limited to public, it should be. Private as well. Uh because there could be an impact on the aquifer, the private, right, of Rye area, and you know, so. But I think that. Is not necessary in this section, which is talking about town services, it's probably more addressed in the environmental impacts, which is talking about. We put in our mean travel speed.
Yeah, he did.
Uh you wanna just put on.
We put in director.
Department of Public Works and in the.
Here, yes.
So B to. B and C. Um first of all, I'm watching this, but B and change that to director. Public Works and what's the? Is it the director of the Board of Health?
Board of Health agent.
Uh whatever his title, it's a quick one there.
Well, I think, did Mr. Mogan say the title for the Board of Health? Who's the staff? What's the title is?
I might have said.
John knows it.
Water supply for the health. If it were.
But that's. So.
Doesn't hurt to add it.
No, but. What is this? Air B, B one. Is talking about impacts the town utilities and services, they're talking about. The public water supply and was that for the public water supply, the B one. I mean, it's. Worth discussing, we can talk about whether. We throw. The health director in here somewhere to talk about the water supply, I just. I'm not sure that's the section it needs to be. In, or at least the title of that section needs to be changed if we're gonna put it in there. But let me just hold on a second.
We can fix that easily and B, the title, take out town, just say impacts to utility services and resources.
Because then when you get to two and you talk about sewage disposal.
That's fine, so yeah, just I guess go back up, take out town. It goes down, I suppose it's gonna be. Consultation. With the department. Uh Director of Department of Public Works and. But I would just say if private. Right, cause I don't think the health director needs to be consulted. If a private water supply is to be used. We'll come back to that, I don't think. Breaks it up too much, but yeah, we can come back to that, but that's right, alright. Okay. Um so if we go back to B and C there. Uh with the capacity of sewage treatment plant that he, he wanted on. Again, I, maybe I was thinking about this differently when I heard the first one. I mean, it's still, if you ask the DPW, do I need to do this? And they say, no, the answer is. That the. Capacity is fine. So shouldn't it just be by evaluation, you're saying that the capacity is fine? I don't think we need to have, requested by the DPW, because I think the answer is contained in the. Answer to the request, right? I mean, it's easy enough to say that it's fine rather than. We request that you do this. And it's not fine.
Well, we're consulting, D, they get consulted.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it, cause Randy was saying, put in, if requested, if for DNC, put in if requested by the DPW, and I think. I mean, I think you, you want the answer. Anyways. And presumably, you'd only be requesting if there was an issue. I mean, to evaluate it. You're gonna be asking the D W. Right? I mean, isn't that the only way you're not be able to evaluate?
Well, the Board of Health evaluated its private systems. Because, well, it's never happened and I don't know if it could happen in Southwick, to have a private sewage treatment plant. Because we don't have a discharge.
Uh alright.
There's some developments that. B four B. Physically, you gotta discharge it somewhere. Winfield?
I guess it would be a septic system, but they spent a million bucks on it. Right? It's a system, it's not just. You know, a gravity bed.
So it's not really a treatment plan, it's a treatment system.
It's a, it's, I'm, I'm not an expert, the health director would be, but it, it, it's not. What you would consider your typical septic system, it is a.
Maybe we should say system instead of plant.
But I think. For the water, I think what you're asking and the question that's being asked and. The response you're trying to elicit is. What are you gonna, what is, what do you think is your consumption? So then the DPW takes that number and says, can the water system accommodate it today based on current use and, you know, future. Uh projection, and if not, what would be the required modifications to the water system to accommodate that project?
Right, so the answer, the answer, the answer is either gonna be, it's fine, or they're gonna have to do something which.
I think it would be, it could be a one sentence answer, right? I mean, the current water system has adequate supply for this project. Which is kinda what they did throughout the moratorium, when somebody came and asked. For relief from the moratorium for. A particular project, or a, you know, whatever the, the thing was, they, they reviewed it, go, okay. I think that, that's, and that would be a suitable answer for the purpose of this.
Right. Right. Alright. Um and then the last thing is um. I would just so evaluate the impact, I would put in the beginning, well, I would, but. For Randy, I will put, uh if. For Randy, I will put, uh, if. If it is. Yeah, I, I guess we can put it. Uh, for residential development projects. Everybody okay with that? That takes care of Randy. Charlie's online.
Well, Randy had one under four B, something about transfer station. It was only resident, he wanted residential in there. Pull this in there.
C, C four. Any wants to know what a local emergency.
Statutory committee that's appointed by, there's different appointments from different. Entity, fire, police, there's a member of the select board. There is someone usually from a health organization, usually Nova Hospital, some two or three from the school, including transportation. There used to be somebody from. Whatever the name of the place is today, you do need an American Indian, then it was something else, it's something else.
Southwood Village?
You don't wanna possess.
I don't wanna be committed to that, um, but there was, it's a pretty diverse group, and then they, they worked through various scenarios. And have, they do have a local emergency plan that they can activate. And in, in the event of an emergency, and they also go through various tabletop exercises every year, to kind of replan and. Some of the, some of the scenarios are rather outlandish, some of them are. Could happen with some outlandish twists, just to make it more fun. No, like a school bus accident and, and, you know, something like that, but then it somehow involves an infrastructure with. Something else, something else, but.
Under solid waste.
Lot of it's very practical, and having those. That's also the face of.
Let's see, see.
Look, insane command, if there was some kind of wildfire emergency. Management. Follows the. Fire system, right, there's instinct commander and blah, 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 public relations and supply and accounting and all of these things.
Where else did he want?
He wants the local emergency planning committee. Um, is this, is that, is, he's on the local emergency.
He is, I, I believe he's by statute the chair.
And fire is on it?
Fire, police.
Okay, so.
Tools, transportation.
I think.
Senior center.
I think it probably makes sense to just leave it at consulting with him. Fire.
Get it to the committee. Whatever terminology he wanted to use, did he give?
Yeah, but I'm not, to me, that seems like a planning committee. In large part.
That, it's in its name, that's why I think, if, if you want to include somebody, the SEMA director.
Which we have already.
Then you're good.
So I think, good, yeah, and that's what I think is, I, I, and we have, so we have SEMA, we have fire, and we have police. That's three members of that committee, I'm pretty sure we can. They need to talk to the committee, they can. All right.
And again, it's the director, correct?
So what's his other? I don't quite understand this other one, as far as fitting it in here. Do you understand that? About the, about the emergency generator, helping for capability for.
Actually, it's a, it's a good point, I don't know how relevant it is to every project, but I remember with the pride gas station, for example. When we had the massive October storm, we only had one or two filling stations that had generation capability, that could make the pump the fuel that they had. And so it was, it was part of the special permit criteria and the pride that they, they have generation on site. Because the Southwood was actually inundated with. Folks from Connecticut trying to get fuel, and they had a couple, the traffic backed up from the notch. South into Connecticut. You could not traverse College Highway. Because of that traffic, so it is a good point that with the current situation with the power grid and, and everything else to. To have it, I don't know how that would factor into, you know, an impact study piece of this. But it might be a good special permit criterion for discussion with somebody, what are your alternatives?
I think it's useful, I just thought. Part of these. Guidelines.
Community impacts, but that's not really. Of applicable either, because it's an impact on. Yeah, no, thank you very much. I think we include that. It, it seems like when we made special permits for. Filling stations. We've included it as a requirement.
Fiscal impacts.
Did we get through, wow, we didn't get through environment. Oh, we did, we did, we did not. C two, the lighting. Yeah, but nothing was changed. You know, light, so you gotta say something more than just light.
But why? If we, when we say mean. Speed. They know what they're giving us. I mean, I just, I think it's, I don't think you need to get into that level of. Detail. I think. If there's a standard measurement of light, that's what people are gonna use.
When measure the knots or the miles per hour, is it?
I like furlongs, I like furlongs.
Where it says relationships to public and private water supply wells and recharge areas, does that? Address your. Does it need to say in aquifers in?
That's your recharge. That's your recharge area, that's the. Mine just happens to be an aquifer that runs off the mountain and then from travels.
All right, last thing for tonight. Um, I do think we should just take some time to read those, oh, that's already done, because she did her homework, but I at least have to read the transportation impacts. Guidelines there, and I just wanna get a better sense of those, so that we're using the right language into that, and I didn't even know those. Reduction of the level of service probably needs to be clarified, and we can probably use that. And talk about whether to use PIA guidelines as a reference point or not. With the idea that they may get changed. Yeah. All right, so, but I, I think we're almost there, I just, again, there's not a sense of urgency, I don't think, because if there's nothing pending, that's what we've done, so. All right, so fiscal impact. You wanted to add to it, right? Yeah, I just wanted to see where it wasn't.
Didn't we make the standard changes, director of the Department of Public Works?
I'm just gonna, yeah.
Chairperson of the Finance Committee. Let's have. That's standard.
Yeah, you said John will do that throughout it. So Diane's two suggested changes would be additions to the fiscal impact section six. E six would be. Demonstration by the applicant and or occupant as applicable. I like your language, and if known at the time of submission. Of financial ability to complete the project, and then C seven would be. Demonstration of financial ability of the occupant or tenant, if known at time submission, to sustain operations of the project via two, five, and ten year. Financial project. So, I mean, I think this is a. You know. Sort of the question of whether you wanna put this, because of this being a major development. And the size and impact of it. Do you wanna? Put those conditions on, I mean, I don't think, we, we certainly don't do it on any other. But there's at least a. I think a, a viable argument that, and a major development, maybe you should, I mean, it's at least, it's at least arguable.
My question is. What evidence is demonstrative of this, and who is evaluating that evidence? Who are we demonstrating this to?
The community needed. Economic Development Commission.
But is somebody who Googles that. Company A had to sell off half of its stock for blah, 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 that sounds like a bad company to me versus. Actually, an economic person actually sat down and reviewed their business profile, and estimates that they had this much in assets and this much in debts, and that they can. Who's doing that information collecting, what is it?
A bank letter. Now, they've already done this to get the financial value from the project. They have already done two year, five year, ten year production.
Why do we have to go over it again? What, you wanna, I don't think I do, no. The bank's not gonna give me any money if they don't already do this. We know this before, he said, we'll think about it, everybody else said no before.
Because you haven't asked it in the count, not because.
I mean, I just think that the, I think the bonding process takes care of a lot of that, yeah. Right, and I get. I mean, I get where you're going, and I get. The idea, I don't know how to put it down into paper, right? I mean, and I get where you. In part, it's reaction to Corona, right? I mean, it just is, because you're talking about a company that.
Not necessarily.
Well, then, but that came up a lot during that process, right? And I don't think if it was. If it was a, if a more, if it was a more. Uh, established company, it probably wouldn't have come up, right? If it was Home Depot, or if it was whoever, that probably wouldn't have come up. So I mean, I do get the idea, you don't necessarily want this. Flash in the pan company who may not have a great future. Throwing all this stuff in here and then being done in a couple of years, I get the idea of that, I just don't know how to. In any kind of fair way or intelligent way, put it into. I think it's a criteria. I mean, it's a, I, I understand the concern, absolutely, but, um. I think, un- under most circumstances, that question's gonna be asked by the financing institution. They're gonna satisfy for themselves, at least we're a lot more, right? Have a better qualified to make that just evaluation, I think we do. But the answer is yes, before the.
By itself. But it's a factor to consider. And you would not want to analyze that, you would go to the finance committee, you would use. Outside consultant to evaluate their numbers.
But if somebody, a banker, or whoever, lending institutions already figured it all out. I'm good. Unless it's such a huge organization, they can just self-finance, in which case, it's gonna be somebody, it's gonna be, you know. Some big Fortune five hundred company that's coming in here, and then again.
And then you say it's N A.
A across, and I think in all situations. Just because somebody either already asked the question, or as you said, it's not applicable. I, and to me, I just think we have protections in place with, with bonding. That would allow for. This to be covered, I just don't, I don't. It's a dangerous slope to go down. And I'm not sure. This is the place to do it, but. And also, it doesn't sound like.
Evaluate that information that you require, what do they do with it? They have bonds as well.
But who requires it? No, but what other towns require it?
I'm referring to Windsor, Connecticut specifically.
Basically, one out of a couple hundred thousand in the United States.
Is that what this comes from, this language? All right, well. I mean, I think.
I asked if there are specific lines, I think they have that.
I think you're, um. Think you have an uphill climb. With the board here, but. Um, since we're continuing it on to the next meeting anyways, you have to, I think, I, I'm willing to look and see if the language at Windsor. You know, satisfied, at least any of my concerns, and maybe others' concerns, I don't know, depends on what it is, I think. Separately, I just don't think it's gonna happen, but, uh, you know, I'm, I'm willing to at least, in my mind, take a look and see if they're finding their success. Narrow it in some way, or, or justify it in some way.
After thinking about it, they get.
No, I mean, I think, I think you focused on the bonding. Is maybe, I mean, I guess that's the question I asked, is, do we think for a major development that our normal process gives us enough information to set a bond adequately? If not, then maybe we had to add some, something in here to say, provide information to us. Yeah, and that, and yeah, let me be clear, I, what I wanna see is their scheme, right? Not necessarily the, the language specific to this, I wanna see how their, what their scheme is, as far as their funding. And if they use something like this, and how it fits together, and, and then look at that in context, and look at what we have and see. What the, what the differences are, um, I mean, that I'm willing to consider. Uh, all right, so I think we can continue this on.
That's almost a pound. Yeah, heavy decision. You took my line away.
All right, um, seven time. I hear a motion. What, what was the date, September sixth?
Marcus Phelps, so move. That David Sutton second. Marcus Phelps, I.
All right. Let's see what's next. Uh, one fifty nine Berkshire Avenue.
Yeah. Ten forty five.
I recommend, uh, continuance without material discussion to preserve eligible votes. I agree. Right here. Uh, a motion to continue this. A motion to continue this. No, I'll put on September, so it's only put it on. Well, yeah, let's put it September. Seven forty-five, we're here in motion. Marcus Phelps will move. We will call vote, make a vote, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's gonna I. Okay.
I have some just two very minded things that I can send to you right now, but it's best.
Uh, new document, you're gonna send it about.
Yeah, that works fine, yeah. Speed it up. So we have stereo decisions.
That's what you were describing.
Stereo decision?
We drove one wall away into eighteen and eighteen.
I'm sorry, did you figure out how to put it up there side by side? That was a good idea, by the way. That's a, why don't we just do ditto?
I would. There are few subtle differences.
Wow.
What are we doing first?
I would say both. That's mine.
You said?
Yeah. Yes, sorry, it's so outside the place. Coming back. The changes are small, but it's two sentences, if you don't have it, I can just.
Watching the tennis game.
Which, which one do you want to look at first? Okay, let's just pull up. Okay, eighteen Hudson. Share my screen. That one?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the first word in that title. This is this one.
Oh, did I know?
Wow, starting up very good, are we? All right, no.
I was wondering. I've actually seen two documents, so we're gonna be, everything's on the subject too.
Uh.
Because we voted, we vote on it, yeah?
We have not voted on it.
Yeah. What? Were you designated at the beginning of this? No, you weren't, right? No, I know.
Like you said, I'm designating her, how far back did this start?
Well, we need four out of five.
Well, let's just, if you're going to the vote this evening, the start singer's not here, but everybody else is here. Yeah, well, let's um.
Are you the market, you, you are the president?
No, we can, we'll designate you. For it, all right. Okay, and what if someone says no?
Then it doesn't matter.
Don't you have five? Wouldn't you want five and do it like normal way?
No.
Why?
Because was she designated, the associate would have to be designated at the beginning of the hearing.
I'm not sure that's true. I think if you
Present for the hearings.
And the record, that's not true, but you have the entire people who are here and on the first day of the meeting or the first day of the hearing.
And then two people don't show up.
Show up, they need to designate. I don't think there's an issue with it, but let's let's do the vote and see if we cross that bridge when we come to it, I suppose. All right. Why does this look?
Been here for a day. You're here an hour early, leaving an hour late.
I know. You saw my life.
You're a great candidate. Don't, don't get well, well, as well as encouraged. So the book first bullet says a modified special permit?
It got changed, it only, it's one wall away this month.
So this should say a special permit.
All right, so I think we got to take this.
Have you already covered that?
Thank you. All right. Yes. All right. Okay, anybody have any issues with the, I guess, the read section?
Well, we took out modified in the heading.
Yes.
But we keep modified in the first bullet.
Because it's for one wall anyway. This is for eight. There are two separate decisions.
Yeah.
One is applicable to eighteen Hudson Drive, one is applicable to one Wally Way because they're two separate properties and they can be split up. So, or, and actually same order now? But it could be split up, so there are going to be two decisions to run with separate properties, but basically it's same decision.
But our decision we're doing now is on eighteen Hudson Drive.
Yes, but there's, well, you should make clear in that decision that there is, there is a joint application of the two properties so that they know what to reference.
Those two bullets each end with an address, which is why one says unmodified special grant and the other one should say special permit.
All right. Anybody have any issues with with procedural history, at least that appears on page one?
Following board members.
Uh, hold on, let's just.
If and when.
Let's just do page one. Well, we closed the hearing, did we not?
We did, we did.
Yeah. All right. All right, anybody have any issues with procedural history on page one, on two or three? No, okay. Okay. Close it.
I was repulsed by it about a year ago.
I think you started that now, I'm gonna be blown out.
Yelled at.
It wasn't just you, I don't think I was ever the skewer.
All right, anybody have any issues on the second part of the procedural history? No. Hearing none. All right. Findings, A, one through five. Bottom of page two, anybody have any changes?
Moving back to two, you just talked four.
Page two. All right, anybody have any changes on one through five? Under section A, general findings.
Mr. Chair, A one. Portion says for business purposes. That's sufficient, that's fine, actually being special permit, available specifically for manufacturing. Business is adequate.
I'll just say that, if it says manufacturing. And that should be a portion of one model.
Yes.
All right.
Long day.
No changes on this, correct?
Are these commercial uses? The applicant proposes to retain existing improvements and I mean, this is industrial restricted zone. Right?
I, I can take out the word commercial, right? They're gonna retain the existing improvements and
and uses.
All right. Last part of the general findings, six here, anybody have an issue with that? Hearing none.
What's a non-subdivision plan? Was that something town council wanted in there? Form A, approval not required. Non-subdivision. That would be better to put in. What? Form A, approval not required. I don't know, do we have anything such as a non-subdivision plan?
It's a water term.
I mean, I, I'm fine with non-subdivision plan, but I mean.
Apparently there.
About recordable, you want the recordable non-subdivision plan that indicates the professional preparation and acknowledgement here.
You okay with that, Marcus?
Yeah.
Special permit criteria. Let's see, put on the screen here. About one through eight. Anybody have any suggested changes on one through eight?
We want to say manufacturing instead of business again.
Uh, no, because what did they apply for?
I think the same seventeen we used for.
We can come back to that.
I think it's the same seventeen we use for pretty much everything.
With some minor modification.
Well, depending on the
reasoning.
If it's in a business zone, then it's business.
It's what they're requesting for the use for the new property, which is, one is warehousing and the other, I just don't know how it's described, so I don't, we'll put in whatever they describe, I don't really care. I don't know how much manufacturing is being done over there. On a new, on a new area, I don't know if they can describe it that myself.
Yeah, they're referring to it as warehouse and an office space.
All we could call it out is office, right? It's an office in the front.
I, I guess they wanted.
Then you could just leave it as business and incorporate both aspects.
The business office.
An industrial business, it's a manufacturing.
We would business.
Let's leave it with business.
Okay, I'm leaving it business though. Anything else, one through eight? Slowly make my way down here. Speak now. We will look at nine through thirteen. Hearing nothing. Gotta go on to fourteen through seventeen. Hearing nothing about fourteen through seventeen. I am going to go on to the specific finding. Because they are nice and tall.
I'll draw the boardroom's attention to the screen for the recent adjustment for town council. The hot portion have it in yellow. After I took that note and implemented it. The easement area that's defined on the plans is they can just reverse that their rear remote area, so I don't know if the functionality is to allow one Wally Drive assets, that's the purpose, or is it even necessary to state?
Say that again, John.
So the area designated plans for the easement is just the portion of the access drive, or I should say the new southerly property line up to the southerly base of the existing building, just that rectangle right there. So where town council made reference to providing access to one wall away, we don't see the proposed easement, at least the showing the plan is extending all the way across, I don't know if that is really the intent or if that's necessary to establish the specific findings.
Like an outfit. Pointing again.
She done?
Orienting again.
Uh, one more way of view, this is another existing building coming down, it's right about there.
Right.
So this area is the four D and four access utility to maintenance purposes. So under specific finding, there's reference to
that has that.
So this goes like. It does all connect.
And this is on this plan.
Yes.
This means one more, one more way to eighteen Hudson. To use this.
And there will be also easements from eighteen Hudson for one more, hold on to some of the shared responsibilities.
Not easements, agreements.
Uh, yes. Yes, uh, town council project is reciprocal.
Fair, yeah. Um, there might be ways.
So not to lose this on a detail, but I want to just, no. On that, I'm not wanting to break highlighted here.
Yeah, I think you just take that out of my mind. Everybody have any issue with that? The yellow, I don't think you need to put in the reason.
That's not even really the reason, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure part of it is, but.
To allow them to build, to build and dispose to.
Well, that, yes, that is, but ultimately, they're gonna be using, they're gonna be in all likelihood using that connection as a access way.
To offer contiguous use between the two sites.
Yeah, so I would take that.
So the yellow is the town council's recommendation to take down?
No, I, that's where after receiving that information, I think that was interpretation that wasn't entirely accurate of what's being shown on the plans. So I'll raise it for discussion.
You know what, I would do this. And the granting of joint easements with eighteen Hudson Drive. Just wanna really look at eighteen.
We are, yeah.
This has to be flipped. The proposal includes retention.
That'll be the last time you think about that.
Yeah. Um, also, this retention, I was just saying, for instance, it's just at one wall away. And the granting of joint easements with eighteen Hudson to allow access for so, so take out the yellow and then the next one to oh.
Don't be me. I don't have presumptions.
Yeah, it's not gonna be the first time, it's gonna be last time.
Understood.
Allow for
vehicle access. Comma.
Granting joint easements, so if you have to allow for your access utilities, then it's a firm order, right? Does that make sense? Okay, there are nothing.
And, and we, the fifty-two was down from whatever that's excessive. It's funny you say approximately, and then it's pretty darn specific.
Oh, I, that, that, the revised figure, Marcus, can you go back to social status, perhaps it's not?
Maybe it's not approximately.
Plus minus.
Approximately and plus minus.
Yeah.
I worked with a consultant.
I'm sure it's not five hundred and sixty-nine, it might be five hundred and sixty-seven.
That's why you put a proximity. All right, anything on one through four here?
Vehicular access.
They already have the balances on.
Yes.
Five through twelve.
So they've got the variances.
That's cool.
So we, we already acknowledged approval in the previous specific findings, so we don't need to say approval in here. Just the recording of the variances. Well, let's say they've been recorded then.
Um, this is just saying what it requires. They can done it, done. I mean, I don't, I don't mind taking out the approvals, but I, I don't mind taking out the approval, because we already know that that's been done.
Yeah.
I just know, I'm not making such an action right now.
Well, I think it would be
I mean, unless they've signed one off with you right now.
I think I should do that.
Can we go back and think about it?
Um.
It's good. Uh, I would delete six. It's already covered in, I think, one, two. One and two, pretty much. I mean, we know what the use is gonna be.
Maybe it looks good there, well, six is supposed five to seven.
I think that's pretty standard, some places, but they put it most of the sense.
But we keep going back and forth between business, commercial, manufacturing, industrial, only above.
Okay. But why does it matter?
Okay, let's keep going. Stay focused. Yeah, it's the zone.
We're not talking about those zones here.
It's the zone and I
Why don't we say that? Uses allowed in the industrial restricted zone.
Wire commercial use is not allowed and we press very restricted zone.
Not allowed, and then not allowed.
Anything with six through fourteen? Fifteen through twenty-one.
Isn't fifteen and nineteen the same? Huh?
Not anymore.
You sure?
Yep.
How about food trucks? I think we should allow food trucks.
You should let the twelve, just to show the emphasis on footnotes.
Yeah. All right, anything fifteen through twenty-one here? Or I guess fifteen through, what was, twenty-two?
The hard man. Apologies, yeah, yeah, my apologies.
All right. We're gonna go through what, in your hard copy is twenty-three through thirty-one.
Looks like it didn't renumber.
Oh, it did not?
Yeah.
It's like, oh, you're right. There you go. So, oh. Now, that's cool. Don't know how I did that, but yes, it did. Uh, and you did make. I think just, you know, said it, just, I knew that someone was coming down.
Thirty again, at thirty-one.
Uh, we're at, so this is what used to be twenty-two through thirty-one.
Then we usually show thirty.
Cause they renumbered, so, yeah, you're killing it, you're killing it. Here's your paper. That'll be pretty.
That's because twenty-nine, it says.
Oh, there's nothing. That's cool.
Cool is one word for it.
Yeah, there you go. It's good. All right. We won't tell them, John will go through all the numbers. Uh, anything on what you're looking at on the television screen? Which the thing.
I'd like to be sealed, but we're watching this instead.
Look at your picture, I'm sure. All right. Okay. So terms and conditions.
Decision.
Did we have an
The last sentence. It is therefore decided to grant a modification to the special permit.
Okay. Terms and conditions, anything? But most of it is pretty.
Did we have anything for the parking lot where that's gonna be shown on the plan? Where, where there's a, there's planting?
For what?
The parking lot. Seems to me we had a landscaped island or something to that effect.
It'll be a plant.
Which we adjusted or we required because of the size of the parking lot, that's correct, so it's a condition we're requiring.
We're working on it, we're getting to it.
Okay.
Anything?
I'm sorry?
Well, I mean, it's in the site plan.
They did amend the site plan.
All right, so, one, maybe issues on one here, pretty, it's just a standard language about it. So transfer, all right, I'll look at two through seven. Which are still two through seven on the hard copy. Any issues with two through seven? Eight through seven.
So this doesn't address the parking lot because it refers to the revised site plan is gonna incorporate the above terms and conditions, but there's no term or there's no condition.
For the parking lot? So I guess the question is.
For the design of the parking lot.
It had, they did incorporate planting and islands in the amended parking lot that eliminated the
in the most recent.
Yeah, to, the traditional, for this road parking.
The July, whatever version of the site plan, latest version, if we go back to that.
Yeah, June.
June twenty-eighth. No. June twenty-third.
June twenty-third. That included that's about my own.
That's correct.
Awesome. Uh, the week nine through twelve, anything? Is it twenty twenty-four? I just want to screw me up, I, I cannot get this straight in my head. Is it two or three years?
What I researched was two years.
I don't know, I can't get this straight in my head, but I'm gonna keep asking you that.
That's tough.
Uh. You know what, I think or how have we done this in the past? Have we done it as the vote here, or have we done it all the votes at the end? All the votes are doing? Or we'll do some votes and all, which way? And then on the end. Uh, terms and conditions for the wellhead protection, does this turn up anything on one through four? Hold on, one second. Why?
Do you want to put the vote?
No, 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 I'm just taking these terms and conditions, so, all right, so. Been dealt with the stormwater event.
Just with the four or five general for lending law, maybe brought mine.
Um, I just saw.
No, you're correct, so the, no conditions for their wellhead of second stormwater component, if you asked about, right? If you asked about, right?
Yeah, I just wanna see how.
I have two provisions. And to incorporate, regarding keeping the range of clean well function condition, shall be altered the drainage patterns. Inside the, um.
I didn't pick up on it. All right, here we go. Forty-two detail. Run through the specific findings, through the decision on. All right, so we put it all in the decision. Put it all in the decision. And just have separate votes. Yeah. So I don't care whether.
We built those commissions into a comprehensive list.
Yeah, so it is therefore decided to grant a special permit and site plan approval. All right, so all the decisions are. All the permits are both into the decision. And then. Uh, we have terms and conditions. I don't care. I mean, we can have a separate one. Or we just keep going. I think we should just keep going. That's what we did before, that's what we did on, um, those details. It's all the same. And then we vote. We have separate votes for every permit. So why for the special permit and site plan, we want one for them, well, and one for the storm. Are there other ones you want to add for the storm? Um, why don't we, one second.
I'm sure the applicant shall be responsible. For keeping the drainage system. In a clean. And well, making functioning. Condition. In accordance with the long-term. Operations.
Uh, capital.
Your luck. Operations and maintenance plan. And shall do nothing. Which would alter the drainage patterns. Or characteristics. As indicated on the plan with the better.
Uh, or characteristics as.
I'm sorry, as indicated on the plans. Approved by the planning board.
Is there anything else? All right, so. All right, and then we have, that's what.
Now we'll amend the vote sections according.
Yeah, we'll put it just. All right, everybody good with this? Everybody awake? Yeah, no? Okay, um. That was never a condition of voting, so we'll, uh. It will. Uh, do I hear a? Motion? To grant a special permit and site plan approval. Subject to the terms and conditions, um, and findings stated in this. Decision. For eighteen Hudson Drive.
Marcus Phelps on you.
I hear a second.
Dave's been a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Dory, aye.
Marcus Phelps.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Just the court, aye.
Okay. Um, do I hear a motion to, uh, grant a wellhead protection district special permit? Uh, subject to the terms and conditions and findings contained in this written decision for eighteen Hudson Drive.
Marcus Phelps will move.
I hear a second.
Dave's been a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Dory, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
The court, aye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to grant a stormwater management permit subject to the terms and conditions and findings contained in this written decision for eighteen Hudson Drive?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Dave's been a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Dory, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Just the court, aye.
Okay. That is that.
I said one.
Number one.
So let's, so John, tell me.
Oh, yes, Nick.
The, uh.
Can you go get some pizza?
One Wally Way. Is that basically, was that basically the same?
It would. So you provide one side by side.
Mike, why you want a pizza match on it?
Cause they're. Very similar.
Coffee beans.
You say coffee beans. He did, didn't he? Apparently, I need coffee beans too, though I'm sure he said that.
All right.
So Wally Way is the modified special permit.
That's correct.
Yep.
And we fix up the easement access. Oh, your system now.
Board of Appeals approval. Then approved by the Board of Appeals.
Going to submit a reportable non-subdivision plan. What are we having?
I don't know how to put, I can't play through this.
Okay. How about this?
I'll be looking at it, so. All right. So this one is modified. And. You, I mean, you can look at your hard copies, um. I'm just looking. At the one we just modified, this was this one on my screen, so it's easier for me, but, um. It's all pretty much the same.
Fifteen and nineteen.
Yeah.
My gift.
Thank you. We'll keep it this night?
It's the same number of pages.
Okay. Findings.
We'll, of course, we. Please have a reporting.
All right.
So they're actually manufacturing something. One Wally Way, right? And we had changed that, I think, in A1, yeah.
It's six reportable. Non-subdivision plan. Top your screen. Yeah, I've given it to the proposal, yeah, given them this.
What is, um? It's existing, I think.
Yes.
All right.
Project on them. Uh, so there.
Well.
Here's the harder part about assigning them, that's what I thought of them. Application for the existing property. How would describe that?
Now to see.
I'm trying to say the exact same thing.
You're gonna want.
This is the exact same thing. She was saying the exact same thing about.
Hey, 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 no phone over there. Did they have to get variances? From Board of Appeals on this? Person?
Yes.
Okay.
One and one one.
So it, yeah, two. It's too close to them, real long. The new real lines.
So they're doing some construction on one Wally Way property.
For the connection of the stormwater. Um. Management system.
And the drive, there's going to be a connecting.
And you're in the extension or correction, whether it was the limits of paving.
Okay. So Doug, what is the answer?
But it's been two forever. I think it says max under the law, so you have.
Oh, I, okay, I didn't see your last thing. All right, not more than, not more than three years, but we've done two. Okay, that's why I'm confused. All right. Well, there's probably many others, but that's. All right. One of these days I will learn that, and one of these days I'll also learn the language that we need to.
Are we requiring, we're gonna include a bond for this, right? At some point. We are bonding for this, this project. Or requiring a bond? I don't know if conservation commission did. In their. Approvals.
Um, I'm not sure we were.
What's that? No bond?
I don't think we thought about it either way.
Yeah, I don't think we talked about it.
It's a known entity.
Yeah. I just, I, yeah. I don't think it did.
I don't know, I don't know where we put it in if we want it.
I mean, it's. Well, we're also halfway through, right? Already did eighteen Hudson. Well, we're also halfway through, right? Already did eighteen Hudson.
Right.
Uh.
No buy.
Yeah, I just don't think it's necessary on this particular project, like I'm not. I don't know. I mean, I think we should probably talk about that. Going forward and get our bond. Requirements a little bit more. That's how we want to do it, but. Um, I think this one falls outside of that.
Do you fix fifteen to nineteen on this one?
Oh, I did. Don't you worry.
Did you like click into the numbers there? To make sure they numbered correctly afterward?
I did do that too.
You don't even read us anything.
Not yet.
Put the same stormwater on. Hey, so we need fourteen fif- fourteen to seventeen on an existing site.
They're modifying the.
Modifying the stormwater system.
I suppose you don't, fourteen, we can not, we can. Oh, I think fourteen is good to have. I mean, it's a modified special permit, so that same conditions would carry over. I don't have to kind of store any. Jewels or agile materials that should be formed. Um, I think that should change. And then set and then eight, what'd you say seventeen or seventeen? Yeah, I think you'll have to just continue over. From the modification. All right, any other? Changes to this particular one? Okay. Do I hear a? Uh, motion to grant a modified special permit inside plan approval? Subject to the terms and conditions and findings contained in this written decision for one Wally way. Dave Spina someone. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Ford, aye.
All right. Like how you kept the tension there. Um, do I hear a motion to, uh? Grant a modified wellhead protection district special permit? Subject to the terms and conditions and primary containment in this written decision for one Wally way.
Dave Spina so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We're all called, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina.
Jessica Ford, aye.
It only really works once you can. We know it's coming. Do I hear a motion to grant a stormwater management permit? Uh, subject to the terms and conditions and findings contained in this written decision for one Wally way.
Dave Spina so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
We need a break.
You need a.
Are you gonna vote?
I. Dave Spina, aye.
Right back on that.
All right.
One more place.
I suggest we, uh? Consider this next item on the agenda, the next meeting.
I'm sure Dave's not gonna fight you on that one.
Yeah.
Well, we'll open it up for discussion at your lights.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
You're not getting this back.
Uh, just give me one second.
I'd like some more time to review this, uh.
What's the other one?
I'm sure the other folks would like some time to review this.
It's only two weeks, I don't mind.
Fifteen page document.
Was I not providing you guys the time?
Well, I had plenty of time, but I just, I don't know, consideration of the other board members. Understood, that's, that's honest, that, I'll take that.
Is he just a placeholder there on page seven, or is there something supposed to be there? Well, I'm just curious. I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to it in the middle of this fifteen paper here, Doug.
Oh, gosh. I imagine it's related to the end of, um, with the condition, oh, above it.
All right, well, we'll deal with that. Uh, we'll refer this to the next meeting. We've got on the routine business, everybody have a chance to look at. All this. Correct that, whatever is. Uh, chapter ninety-one license for one forty-one, comic period open. Is that just to remind us that the comic period is open?
Uh, yes, so, um. If the program was like, I can provide links, uh, who asked you to the submit all? Um, I think Megan might have shared. Well, they must eleven documentation, but the bottom line is, uh, that comment here is open through September twelfth. So if there are plenty of. We want to contemplate what it might be, uh, and assembling. He said suggestion, put together a draft letter, I, I imagine it would relate to. Well, let's go with that. The other captain license, uh, for one-on-one makes reference to pending water approval. Of. Uh, a specific number of words, so as long as the. Perspective license, uh, for one forty-one, final month makes reference back to the lighting board's decision. Even as in a general fashion, I think it probably covers, I'm gonna call it the primary concern, which is the relationship of changing at least. Postlets. But that's for the, for you all to consider.
Have you, um? I can't remember, do you circulate the license application? Chapter ninety-one, I don't like.
This is the, came in after a while, I don't remember, maybe.
We haven't just circulated it.
Sure.
Why don't you give us your thoughts at the next meeting and then everybody can take a look to it and see if they have anything that we should as a board respond and put out there.
Okay, so we should submit one letter under.
Well, you can do whatever you want.
Signature of the chair. If we're gonna. Comes consensus at the next meeting.
Yeah.
They'll give us, it's due the twelfth. And we're meeting before the twelfth.
Yeah.
But you're gonna send the application, everybody, and we can provide comments to you.
Yes.
All right. Reappoint subcommittee members. Master plans up maybe?
Master plan subcommittee, short-term mental subcommittee.
Would we appoint them?
We do, uh, because we have.
About a year?
No, uh, June, July first, essentially, they asked that. So they weren't appointed for a longer period of time than one year? Did we specify when we, when they were appointed, how many years they were appointed? Because that means the last couple of meetings we've had. Are not official meetings because these.
That's true, according to the report. You, they are still official until reappointments have been made.
Oh, it continues until reappointments.
That's what I've been told.
Good. Well, speaking for the master plan advisory committee, as far as I know, everybody is still on board. Uh, I haven't heard of anybody, any changes in the committees. You know, there's been some appointments to. Conservation and egg. But neither of the people that are serving on the advisor committee. Were involved in that, so. Um, I would say it's good to keep who we have. Keep the list of, uh? Twenty members we have.
Do I hear a motion to reappoint, uh, Marcus Phelps? To the, uh, master plan advisor.
Dave Spina so moved.
The second.
Second. Nervous, weren't you? No, no, I wasn't right, waking.
You should save it for that, that would have been beautiful. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps abstained.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. You have some concerns about him?
Yeah, you have some concerns about yourself, really?
Do I hear a motion to appoint Dave Spina to the, uh, master plan advisory committee?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
The second?
Second. Now I wanna take.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Okay, no concerns whatsoever.
On board.
Motion to appoint Doug Moglen, uh, as the select board member to the master plan advisory committee.
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Second. We should add to a few more.
Call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Why are you shaking your head? No. You're in, man, there's no getting out.
Not until you say aye.
They speed, aye.
Whatever, it's all good.
I thought we went through the list, that, that's, I could be.
I thought we did it for three years because we figured the master plan.
So who's calling for this?
I don't want there to be any issues.
Cover bases then.
You know, let's phrase it this, well, well, that's fine, we'll keep that, but let's phrase it this way, uh, do I?
Omnibus, just read the names?
No, I'm not doing that.
Okay.
It's, I'm not.
Individuals. All right.
I don't want any issues. Do I hear a motion to appoint Randy Brown as the EPW, as the designated EPW member of? The master plan advisory committee.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Dave Spina second.
Do I, uh, roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint, um? David? He, I always. He Delory. Thank you, as the partisan commission, uh, designated member.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Bert Hanson as the agricultural commission designated member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Dave McWilliams as the conservation designated member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Norm Cheever as the links management committee designated member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Something, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion, uh, to appoint Patrick Jobb as the school committee member designated member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Pat stayed on, right? It was John who left. School committee, that's all.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to appoint, uh, Lila Di Maria as the finance committee designated member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do, uh, hear a motion to appoint Amber Block as the economic development committee designated member?
Marcus Phelps and.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a, uh, motion to appoint Scott Lehman as, uh, the, uh? Owner of town business member of the master plan advisory committee.
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Dorian Floyd as a resident member of the master plan advisory committee?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Roz Terry as a resident member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Jessica Whitmore Parker as a resident member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint David Si as resident member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Ursula Overga as a resident member?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Uh, do I hear a motion to appoint Michael Doherty as the executive of planning board? Uh, chair member?
You should think about this.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Heads have come home to this. Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. You feel like you're hurting me in some way by not appointing me, but that is not.
Well, you're ex-officio, that's why we voted you in.
Did we appoint the students or did we not appoint the students or they just?
We did not. And they've been excellent participants.
No, no. I just gotta do it short term. We'll be out here by ten.
Yeah. He promised. Mike has honesty issue, Doug.
Yeah.
Mention you have?
Would you push me through?
Just say. How many are on that one?
I don't know, I'd do an omnibus.
Forty-five?
Four. It changes. It's been, they did get a new member recently.
Alex White, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
All right, the select board.
Yeah. Board of health. Board of health director. Alex White. Health director. Let me talk about the master plan while we're.
Do I hear a motion to appoint, um, Richard Essinger as the, uh, planning board member for the? Short-term mental subcommittee.
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Uh, roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Doug Moglen, um, as the designated select board member of the? Committee.
So moved, Dave Spina.
Uh, roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Uh, do I hear a motion to appoint? Russ Anderson. How long's Russell?
No.
He's not that.
He's retired.
That's the, uh.
His party is the sixteenth of September.
We'll just appoint him and then we will, um, what's the new person then? So, uh, do I hear a motion to appoint Russ Anderson as the, um, uh, fire? Chief member of the, uh, committee, subcommittee.
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do we, uh, hear a motion to appoint Randy Brown, uh, as the EPW director, member of the committee?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Kyle Scott as the building inspector, member of the subcommittee?
Marcus Phelps so moved.
Dave Spina second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Alex White as the board of health director, member of the subcommittee?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Dave's been a second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Do I hear a motion to appoint Rep Vanish as the police member of the short-term rental subcommittee?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Dave's been a second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint? Pat Odeorn as the resident member of the subcommittee?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Dave's been a second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye. Do I hear a motion to appoint Jacqueline Sinets? As the resident member of the subcommittee?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Dave's been a second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye. Mr. Sutton, do I hear a motion?
Make the motion close the meeting.
Everybody see that new meeting things? Everybody fine with that? I see them.
We need to discuss if I'm fine with. I told you that I couldn't attend for once. The timeframe and I can't wait for it, so. So we'll be able to next week.
Are we sure on the September?
You got a second? Yes.
Six in the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, yep.
Yes, yes.
Do I hear a second?
Dave's been a second.
I second, I have a second. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.